The meeting is live.
First day of spring. Spring means temperatures go from here to here and back down here.
So we don't need to have like snow and sleet and rain at the same time with.
It's uh welcome to the March twentieth meeting around the county commissioners, please stand and join.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We might have some public comments.
Good morning, Commissioner. With the reach committee. I am here this morning to award the April employee of the month. And so this nomination came in for Mary Ann in the treasurer's office. Mary Ann cares deeply for her coworkers and always remembers the small things like someone's favorite coffee creamer, just to make them feel special and heard. She is a great coworker and a friend to everyone. Thank you. Mary, would you like to come up? Okay, Mary Ann, you have to come.
We expect a long speech too.
When have you been on this?
Ten eleven years, it was in November.
Alright, and one, two, three. Let's change something. Okay, one, two, three. Alright, thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, I'm Jared Trumbull, Metropolitan Metropolitan Planning Organization. I just wanted to stop by this morning, let you know, we're hosting a series of uh public meetings on our electric vehicle readiness plan, one of which is in Manhattan. Um, this plan is just a regional look at how the region can become ready if and when EVs do become uh more popular here. Uh, we will be going over this at our policy board meeting as well, but I brought these little postcards for each of you, just as a reminder to invite you in person, if you're interested, stop by. So thank you very much. The other thing I wanted to say is I'm happy to come back and discuss the plan to you in person, if that would be of interest, if not, I will be discussing it with different staff at our town meetings.
Any other comments? Not with Commissioner.
Okay, well, got a lot going on, I guess, but a few things. Monday afternoon, had my monthly doctor's appointment. It did not go very well this time. Um, I've started to feel like my body is becoming my own worst enemy at this point, so um blood pressure, everything's. I don't know, so I'm gonna have to look at some things a little bit differently, it looks like, I don't know how that's gonna work just yet, so. Um, Tuesday afternoon, I had my first civic and social responsibility meeting of the year out of Florence. We was just kind of sit down and discuss some first and second quarter items and including specifics of a program that we're working with the habitat of the Northern Flint Hills. Um, allows employees have an opportunity to use um this volunteer paid day off that's uh we've established and uh um just trying to find some ways to connect to communities, to give them some options to be able to to use that time and and to get engaged with the community as well. Um, gonna do something for Earth Day this year. I don't know what yet, we didn't come up with any grandiose ideas for that, but um if everybody's got any, shoot them my way and I'll shoot them to them and figure something out anyway. Uh, we're gonna start deciding a process on how to distribute donations that have been made internally uh for community services and the agencies that provide those. We'll also be working on some plans and events for the year or um throughout the rest of the year, uh during our next meeting, probably in April. Uh, Wednesday afternoon, I met with the Rural Economic Development Advisory Board. Once again, thank you for switching days on, we didn't have the NPO meeting yesterday, that happens at the same time, we will in April, as Jared just alluded to, but so that worked out fine with me. Actually, we ended up turning that into a Zoom call because of the weather, so we didn't need in person, so it worked out well. Um, because of the inclement weather, we had to do that, so uh discussed my thoughts and visions for the board moving forward. Uh, there's a really great list of questions that were provided to me and discuss that and um you know, just not just for the county, but just rural economic development in general. Uh, had a really good conversation, there were some great points that were made and provided by everyone and I think we need to find a little bit more time to engage uh with this particular board moving forward, particularly as we continue with our comprehensive plan uh moving forward. Uh, let's see, Thursday morning, um this morning, I guess, um attended the policy breakfast hosted by the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce. Um, at the uh hotel formerly known as the Hilton or whatever it was, but now it's the Doubletree by Hilton, so I guess it wasn't Hilton, I bet. Uh, this month was the City of Manhattan theme, was both Mayor Karen McCullough and City Manager Daniel Dooley both gave presentations. Uh, thanks to Frontier Development Group for being this month's sponsor as well, always great event to socialize and network at. And then just lastly, uh just wanted to point this out that yesterday, the county health rankings and roadmaps were published. Uh, KAC is hosting a webinar to go through those this afternoon. Hopefully you got an email on it, I did. Um, Riley County scored pretty well for the most part, uh both the state and national rankings, uh which of course is good. Uh, children in poverty, youth unemployment, access to dental care, they called it severe affordable housing and uh the shortage of those in the area were some of the areas of concern for Riley County, so um that's all I got.
Okay. Okay, uh Monday, I attended a law board meeting at noon. Um, it was an extensive agenda, including regular reports and budgets, board presentations and recommendations. In that effect, Patty's Day overview was given by Director Pete. Um, I think I wrote this down right, he said there were five hundred and three service calls received over the weekend. Um, then a long discussion was held on the Agueville road restrictions that have been put into place, which includes closing incoming traffic on Friday and Saturday nights from eleven PM to two thirty or three AM. Uh, most weekend nights will see six to seven officers unless uh some were called away on other calls. Like up in the county. The goal is for the safety of people in the streets and sidewalks late at night. Uh, Laurel Street is closed to incoming traffic and ride shares and Uber drivers will have pickups on Twelfth Street. Um, night streets will be will remain open for parking and pickup, I guess. People parked in the zone um prior to that time will be allowed to leave. There were several business owners and citizens who made public comments wanting a different system barricades. Seeing the police cars with lights discourage business, not only at nighttime, but during the day, they get so leave zone. One of the regular duty officers uh signed in Agueville and she works seven at night to six in the morning. Um, reported that they that they appreciate the street closures as the officers can do a better job when traffic is is not moving through on Laurel Street. Those comments were also made, more officers were needed over the. So it was a fairly lengthy discussion. A lot of comments for me, so. Uh, also discussed was the school resource topist op- opposite program and value of cost sharing opportunities with school districts. So it was a fairly long meeting ending around two thirty. Everybody was a little weary. Um, Wednesday, I had a couple of appointments, lunch with a friend and then took my taxes into the county, went over that, which was good. Uh, we did go up into Saint Gordon office spaces, building was just really amazing, they did a great job, it's weird. Quite a bit different than the one that's down here, I. Um. Let's see, um, weather was really cold and windy, so I stayed at home rest of the evening and then I have several meetings and like schedule for the rest of the week. That's it for me.
Monday morning, or Monday afternoon, I also attended the uh law board meeting, I think you covered it pretty well, there was some complaints, but it seemed reasonable what they're trying to do to control, it's just Friday and Saturday night. They're concerned about flashing lights and they said, well, you don't use flashing lights.
Yeah.
There's well, at least the I think the Agueville tried to work with the place to keep it a safe place. Yeah, Tuesday afternoon was the EMS building update, still been moving along, completion scheduled for the end of June. Metal panels going up on the front, which really.
Yeah.
It sees what you can really see what's gonna be in the interiors moving quickly and um you know, the curved gutter is down and back, start working on paving with weather allows. Then after touring the building, we met to look at the EM building remodel. Architect had the schematic drawings and VHS had first estimate. There's a lot of discussion about how large of a storm shelter area is needed and about fire sprinklers and quite a few divisions, like I said, this was his first blow through, there's a lot changes that they made for the next meeting to look at, but we get there and keep it within the budget. Then Wednesday was the human detention board meeting, several representatives from the farther north counties didn't make it. They must venture through the storms up there, they tried Seth and Zoom and had a lot of trouble with that, so we're kind of late getting started because they couldn't, hadn't used it very often. Trouble on their building sand, getting it set up. Trying to get it going and then hit the wrong button. Close it, had to start over again. Uh, but there are several new members uh this year and that they went over a lot of stuff like over the financials, because there's quite a bit of stuff to go over, explaining them how it was all set up. And then had a discussion that DCF is still trying to make changes that would um affect secure care kids and that really hold back, will limit what they can do to help them. And they gave us the names of the people on the committee to contact, they don't think it's gonna make that a committee, but and Angel is one of the people members, so I'm gonna get to talk back there and see how things are going. And uh then this morning was the we call policy something.
Policy breakfast.
Policy breakfast, yeah. And I think.
I think I like the building better too, yeah.
Anyway. That we went sort of.
First item's annual FRA declaration form for the firefighter's relief program.
You have anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, so this is new this year, so we, every year we turn in our financials for the FRA, so FRA is a firefighter's relief association. So everybody's insurance in the state a little a little bit goes to the insurance uh from your insurance, go to the basically pay for eighty percent of our firefighters' uh life insurance policies that we carry on them. Um, it also goes towards our retirements or annuity. And so this is a new form that they're having us do, when I fill out the statements, it's just saying that we're participating in it. Um, if you have any more questions about our FRA, um, you guys are welcome to get with me, but I just need signatures so I can send my documents and kind of keep going with that, so.
Well, I'm going to approve the annual FRA declaration form for the Raleigh County Fire District number one for participation in the firefighter's relief act program.
I'll second.
Been moved in second to approve the annual FRA declaration form for Raleigh County Fire District number one for participation in the firefighter's relief act program, all in favor?
Thank you.
Next item is appoint Jennifer Lopez to the Raleigh County Public Health Council and approve the resolution.
Now we got celebrities getting on boards now, alright.
Sticking here in those shows, Steve.
Oh, okay, we'll go ahead and um uh move to appoint Jennifer Lopez to the Raleigh County Public Health Council and approve the last resolution doing so.
I would second that.
Been moved in second to uh sign an appointment letter for Jennifer Lopez, the Raleigh County Public Health Council, approves the resolution. The appointment, all in favor?
Item's a Raleigh County employee action form for Jarius Kelly for a transfer as a A E M T in the EMS department. Item's approved payroll and accounts payable for March twenty first.
Make a motion to approve payroll and accounts payable?
I would second that.
Been moved in second to approve payroll and accounts payable, all in favor?
I didn't get a room, don't.
Yeah, I guess.
No, we didn't figure that one out either.
That would be the worst sign.
Well, I think maybe what little bit of moisture we got yesterday might have knocked off the column out at least, or if not, the wind blew it down to Texas, one of the two.
I don't know, kind of follows that vision.
Oh, um. Mulberry, just there's a.
I don't really seem to need three.
I'm just going off what the meteorologist just said, they're always right.
After after yesterday was probably.
Yeah. Once again, we got just enough moisture to get my truck dirty.
Yeah.
I washed some windows, you know, a week or so ago, putting screens back on and now they're all.
Left work yesterday about two o'clock and it was raining, sleeting and snowing at the same time and it's coming sideways, I'm like, this isn't good.
Next item's approval of minutes from March seventeenth.
I didn't see anybody.
Yeah, I would make a motion to approve the minutes as presented from uh the March seventeenth, uh meeting in the Board of County Commissioners.
Second.
Been moved in second to approve the minutes from the uh March seventeen meeting, all in favor?
Any changes to the tentative agendas?
What did I say?
Nothing for press conference either. I have a whole bunch of my things there, but thank you, appreciated. We'll use one right now.
They're doing. They're not feeling good, another had cold, so they tested positive for COVID.
Bad gum.
They're down. I know, that's it's true.
Yep. That festival Friday triggered mine, it's gotten better fun for that. It triggered something, stirred up something.
I got kind of over my stuff Sunday, but.
And then yesterday's. Went at about five or or about six with my dog and it was fine, it was a nice day.
I went to work at nine yesterday and that's a pretty nice spring morning, I mean, it really was, I left at two, it was five hours later and the whole world had changed. Walked outside, it was hurricane force winds and everything. Only thing we didn't have going on at that time was hail, and if the sleet gotten any bigger, I just would have called it both.
Yeah.
No fun.
No, no. Well, I kept seeing the wind die down in the evening and. But I went to get the mail, five or six or something, you barely walk, I mean, the rent, there's gusts of wind, you could barely walk in, I mean, it really.
It's it's crazy. Uh, management company, I read from, we had metal sign out there, I know, letting everybody know there's places for rent and that that poor sign has just taken a beating this month.
Yeah.
I saw it this morning, it was laying up against a tree, I think it gave up.
Clean out our yards, we had the neighbor's trash can, they're over in our yard, there's hard door things, paper sacks and.
Yeah, yesterday in our neighborhood, it's trash day.
Oh, oh, good.
So and everybody put their trash out the night before and that's.
Think I was over it, I made a mistake, it was grocery shopping right after work and one of the signs, one of the Hy-Vee sales signs, like I saw it in the air. Like, I guess that's one way to get, you know, get.
That's a good marketing.
Yeah, I mean, I sure paid attention to it. We said, it's in the cloud, that's not exactly what we meant. Did you want to go out?
He slowed to the ground. The wind almost took me up, I was like hanging on.
I stepped outside, my hair started blowing around, that's how I know it's moving. I'm like, I better hold it place. I never stopped teasing John Eller about his lack of hair, right, so I don't know how he knows. Yeah, I mean, he just feels the wind, I guess.
Kind of like when the astronauts were up there. Standing straight. It's cool, they made it back, okay. Also, well, they were doing showing come out with the capsule lights.
Yeah. I wonder if they're gonna want to go back.
After all, I doubt it, not for long.
I think I'd retire and say, yeah, I'm gonna get a desk job somewhere.
That one, in chambers for a while, to have a.
You know, it's decompression.
Decompression, you know.
Body's adjusted back to gravity.
It's gonna be interesting to see what kind of kind of effects.
Thirty tomorrow? Tournament starts today, doesn't it? I guess actually, yeah. Yes, we're from our Wildcats this year. I filled out two, well, that's just those two people emailed me and said, hey, you want to join our group? And I'm like, eh, okay, otherwise I probably wouldn't have. Good thing this year for some reason is is one the take this tournament and try to turn it into what it looked like for football, there were sixty four teams. You'd be glad to know K-State is projected to be a fifth seed there.
Just up there, season tickets. I don't know, I haven't seen the skip. Get back into it.
We play uh Iowa State, of course, in Ireland to start, and then first home games against Army.
Oh, that's right.
Maybe the Fort Riley day up to coincide with it, it's gonna be cool.
I would shake, I would shake my head whenever you play Army, that's a tough game. They're just, they're the what, the style of football they play, it's old school, it's almost like rugby, it really is, it really is.
Commissioners, uh Bryant Parker, uh county counselor. I uh this morning, I wanted to focus in my administrative time. I, uh, this morning, I wanted to focus in my administrative time on the. Our, the space needs study RFQs, request for qualification from firms, uh, you talk about. Government moving rapidly, John, since we spoke, has already gotten me drafts. Of RFQs for both um, SCRC and the Health Department as well as for the um. The courts, uh, so it'd be the courts, uh. Uh, community corrections and the county attorney's office, and of course. It's within the governing body's discretion to, you know, who all to include with, you know, any of these, right, any department could go in. But what the, what staff's goal is, is to get you documents to review that then you can look at. Adjustments to say, hey, we want to do this, oh, we're not so crazy about this. And also, we can also put in, if we need to, flexibility in some of the plans about, well, yeah. We're looking at these, you know, these facilities are currently. Staffed here, you know, they're currently at these locations, but we, you know, throughout the process, we can provide input. I know there's been discussion about over in the SCRC facility in particular, as well as where the Health Department is housed. Maybe there's some space that we could look at for repurposedment. And so all of that can be brought into this, I, I would think that. There'd be a number of. Interviews, I don't know how else to call them, the. The consultants always have fancy names for these things. I don't track them anymore, I just say interviews or chats and I would.
They're called meetings.
They're called meetings?
They're just called meetings.
Okay, there's called meetings. Okay, thank you, thank you. There we go. Well, there are a number of meetings, I think both with staff and then also, um, oh, the mic's picking me up now. Both with staff as well as uh, with, with staff in the governing body, um, and I, I don't. I think the only reason why we would have potentially like a staff meeting before we have staff in the governing body is so that we can help consolidate some. Comments, I mean, maybe it's just like the each department has a get together to say, hey, this is kind of what we're thinking so that when. We sit down, we don't have a four hour long meeting, not on any. Now, I love four hour long meetings. I do, I do, but that's, that's kind of what I think the process might be, um, and so. So what my hope is, uh, because I'm, I'm very eager to get this in front of the governing body. Uh, and I talked about it in department head meeting, uh, so I'm gonna add some language, hopefully not. Mess up too bad, the document that John on, uh, you know, puts some, uh, took, uh, took the first stab at preparing, we're trying to keep them. Easy to respond to, uh, I hate RFQs that are forty pages long and that, I mean, we're trying to keep these. You know, ten pages or less and really get down to the guts of what we're looking for, not get into. Uh, unlike our friends at the federal government, God bless them, right? I don't really care what the font is that they, or the form that they use, we care more about the information they give us. And so that's what we're trying to do to keep it um, easy to respond to. And uh, the only direction at this point that I would. Ask for uh, from the commission is specifically regarding courts. Obviously, we have made no determinations because, well, first of all, we're still on vacation about the future, you know, what we. Need to do with uh, the Christian church property, but also, um, since there has been discussion by past commissions. About uh, and I, I came up to speed on some of that, uh, when I was preparing for our appellate argument. That the church in the past had been thought about as a potential site for the courts. It might make sense to include as part of the space study, uh, looking at. The church as it sets and if it would, I mean, at this point, we would have to proceed as if it's still subject to all of the, you know, historical requirements. Might make sense to include in our space needs study an evaluation of whether the church could be used. Um, for the courts, um, and then that would also go towards um, creating a record, uh, if we needed to. Somehow address that at the, at the level of um, going in front of the state historical society. Now, I know that's been studied previously and it's come back with a, it's not feasible um, for, you know, in its present state, I would. I would add to that, that since that time, since it's been listed. We can't even change the, the structure. Uh, certainly not the outside and a lot of the stuff on the inside is pretty load bearing. So that would merely, I wouldn't suggest that our consultant would need to do a lot. Of reinventing the wheel there, but perhaps can look and see if those, um, the prior study that was done would still be applicable in light of what the. Current results of the space needs study comes out to be and that would be useful from both the litigation perspective and. Also from educating our public as to some of the constraints that we're looking at uh, with that space. Would it seem reasonable to the commission to have that information uh, looked at by the, by the consultant from the court's perspective?
Yeah, that would also do due diligence, which is what we would need to sell, whatever we do to the public, so that's. To me, I think that's, I don't know if that's. What priority that would be in this, this, you know, this building, you included this building upstairs, right?
Yeah.
With the RFPs on the other.
Well, this, they're separate.
Yeah, another, yeah, I'm just making sure we have all of bases covered.
Okay, yeah, they're, so they're, so basically, great, part of the utility of the study is if. Um, what my understanding is, is that the commission's identified, you know, there's only so many places. And from a legal perspective, if we're going to, at some point. Um, we have to consider that space for what it was originally purchased for, which was to place courthouse there. We need to, as part of our study, show that we consider the feasibility to the state of Kansas for the current building to be used as a courthouse. Now, we've already done that um, in a prior study, but it would be. It would be important um, in light of its listing to have our prior study looked at. And see if anything has changed, number one, but also, number two, right, in light of what our current needs for the courthouse are. Right, whether the building that has been listed could be. Courthouse, right, I don't want to. We, it's important that we are able to demonstrate that to the state historic preservation board. Uh, should we have to go and seek a request to uh, do something to the building if it were to come back and not be deemed feasible for use? And so we don't need to talk about. About that or decide today, um, but it's something that I wanted to throw out there so that the commission can be thinking about it. Um, as your attorney, it's important that we have um. The best evidence that we could possibly have uh, to uh, present to the state. Historical preservation board should be built, which. We don't know how long it will. But it could be quite a long time.
I don't think that original study showed it as courthouse, though, I think it showed is they moved commission chambers over there and office space.
It was a brand new building. Yeah, there was court, there was courtroom space in there on floor two.
And I apologize, I didn't mean to spring something on us, I should have, I should have created a, uh, uh, I should have created a separate. Agenda item on this.
I think when we discuss it next time, it needs, you need to have a car with it.
Okay, I can do that and we'll, we'll have the, we'll have the car, I just really wanted to get this up in front of the. Yeah, the commission for thoughts. And, and I can do a, I can do a better job of looking at our um, prior study to see exactly what it stated and I'll have that included in a car so that.
It would be good to have at least an estimated cost.
Of what the, of what the, of what this would be, yeah, and this is, this is a. Um, I can tell you that doing this will be crucial to any settlement. Right, um, that would be. So. We can, we can do that and we can also have what the idea of the cost would be, um, so. There's a discussion that there could be cost savings um, by doing the, the study for the, by combining also a look to see if. When the consultants look at what our space needs is, right, also to say, hey, could you use the church for this? Right, because they're already gonna have all the information in front of them and then, then they can just look at the footprint of the church and say, okay, this is something that could be done. Versus not done, right, um, and what would that even look like, right? So I don't want to prejudge what the consultant might come back and say. Um, but I, uh, I will present all this in part and then we can have uh, that discussion. Uh, if that makes sense, that's all I have.
Well, but back to the other, other RFPs, we have all these space needs, you know, this, this building, the other building. Those are all in those RFPs and they're separate RFPs or they're all?
That's, that's what we've been discussing, Commissioner, is whether the, the RFP for the, the courthouse would also include. Would also include looking at the Christian church property to say, could this be?
What she's asking, are we doing separate ones for each one of the buildings? So the CPE building, this building, is it, are they separate or is it all one? Well, that's what you're asking.
Yeah, they're separate.
Each building.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I wanted. Okay, I just want to make sure we were.
No, that was fun, I wanted to make sure that's how we were tracking. And the health department's separate as well, so. Count four separately.
Yeah, my idea was. If we did something with one of the two health department or RFPs, then maybe that. Consultant would take over any design that we would have.
Think there's some potential cost savings there since they've already done.
Yeah.
You know, some look, looksies, that's another technical term, looksies. So that's, that's all I, that's all I. Okay, all right, let's, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Always glad I could be confusing during my. Dictionary dot com with that.
In here, cleaning this thing out. I can't even read it, it's smaller than what I have. Yeah, minus the other one's not like that, and I'll leave a paper, so this one they can test and you can't hardly read it from.
I haven't even looked at it since, since they tore apart. Okay, I'll, I'll grow up. Commissioners, Brittany just informed me that they're voting on twenty three ninety six today on the. Right, and apparently it's been gutted and they're.
Yep.
Doing all kinds of stuff.
Which ones? Tax bill.
Oh, wonderful, so we're doing it now.
Yes.
Of course.
Of course.
And what's gonna happen is, is they'll look at it, amend it, and there'll be two different versions and it'll have to go to conference and then. Who knows at that point in time?
Well, and to be fair, there already are two different versions, right, so there's hospital twenty three ninety six and then their senate bill, what, two eighty? And they're competing against each other.
And they're very, they're night and day different.
Oh, yeah.
That's what'll end up in conference and who knows where that's going to end. It's. It's strange this year with the, how far off both chambers are. The judicial. Passed in the house yesterday. All the judges. Yeah, next year.
Yeah, one hand, like makes.
What it'll actually do is it'll just create a lobby where. Millions and millions of dollars will get funneled into it. There was no way I was ever gonna be anything but a local. As a little boy, you come to a meeting and they're talking about. Tractors, like. This is what you play with. I'm old enough to play with the real metal ones.
This guy, I think they're like up to two sixty two thousand, I said, nope, we still open one for three twenty five.
Exactly, I'm interested to see this too. Yeah, exactly. I'm interested to see this too.
It was funny that he said, one of the counties bought one of, one of used from the county, because it was even, they had, but theirs was even worse. One of the counties about new one, it's even, it was better to put the heads and they sold it next cash.
I, I think we got a bid opening for a fifteen ton hydraulic duck tail trailer.
Uh first one's from Hoyt Trailer Center in Topeka. Okay, so I'm looking at a unit price of forty-one thousand six hundred dollars. And it says here three months from approval date. Won't we, they deliver or do we go pick it up? Okay.
Right, it's. Cause Southern's from Florida, so.
Yeah, Washington, Florida.
Yeah, we'll go pick it up.
Yeah, I bet you will.
It might take a week.
Yeah.
Smarty Joan Drive, that's kinda.
Yeah, I saw that too. Yeah. This next one is from Phoenix Contracting, and you, oh, sorry.
Too much.
I just wanted to get to Florida.
Yeah.
Okay, until about June first.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
And the humidity. It's just Hoyt Trailer Center in Topeka. Price of forty-one thousand six hundred and estimated delivery of three months.
Okay, the next one here is from Phoenix Contracting, Ruskin, Florida. I don't know the part of Florida that's from. There's a story behind that, I'm sure.
Somebody's missing it.
By the owner as a company. Pictures of it. I think it has a truck in that one. I'll get there eventually. Also, oh, okay. I'm like. Okay. Yes, it's free, yeah, there you go, uh um. Oh, wow, um sixty-nine thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars is.
Is that, that's delivered?
I'm assuming. It looks like it says estimated twelve weeks after approval. I guess that's three months, you know. Yeah. There's pictures galore, and if you look at pictures.
This makes Phoenix contract Florida. Price, total price sixty-nine thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars in a twelve week delivery.
So I would make a motion to refer these bids to staff for their decision, review.
Okay, second.
We moved in second to send the bits to staff for the review recommendations, all favor.
Aye.
Aye.
To put outside.
Ready?
I'm ready.
Well, good morning. Um, this morning I invited Greg Guystone. He's gonna share a little bit what's been going on with horticulture. He's been doing a lot in his apartment, but uh.
Including saving your plants in the office.
Yeah, I told him the story about it. Turns out I learned from our local horticulture agent, I should not have brought tropical plants to my office during subzero weather. Uh, there's a reason I I am the director, not the horticulture agent. Um, but I did wanna make a quick plug that on April sixteenth, um, trying to get the word out and we'll send out information as well. Email that April sixteenth will be retirement party for Lynn Berry. And I stand corrected, forty one years in extension, forty nine years in service to Riley County, she was downstairs for that, so.
I knew she was here longer than I've been alive.
I didn't wanna say. So, uh, so yeah, just a plug, we'll get out information, but yeah, forty nine years you've been serving Riley County in different facets. So that's on April sixteenth from four thirty till six, I believe that is. But anyways, that's my plug. Uh, wanna give some time to Greg Guystone to brag about what he's been doing.
Think about what I've been doing.
That's that's what I said.
Okay, so, well, good morning.
Morning.
Uh, just wanted to go over the highlights of the Master Gardener program in twenty twenty four. Typically do this, uh, so we had fifty three volunteers. And, uh, they provided eleven hundred and seventy five service hours. Reached five thousand two hundred eleven contacts. So if you put a dollar value to volunteerism, it's around thirty seven thousand three hundred sixty five dollars. And they also continue to learn, part of our data system is they participated in four hundred and twenty hours of events training. So that was for twenty twenty four, which is a little bit down from previous year. But their volunteers reporting. It's it's the closest reading. As far as things we've been doing this year already for master gardeners, um. They spent, uh, home show was now the first things kicked off in around three hundred contacts there. We are going to, for the first time, try the Flint Hills Festival on May third. It's an all day festival, see if we can reach some people there. They are planning to be at the farmer's market, which they usually do, but it's gonna be the last Saturday of each month. Weather dependent, volunteer availability, all those kind of things. The other thing I wanna highlight is, uh, put on your calendar is the annual garden tour. It will be June twenty first. That runs from eight thirty to one. And, uh, we have our five private landscapes, uh, selected and of course K State Gardens is on there as well. Need more specific sets up on our website as far as the locations. Master Gardeners and I are knee deep in our four H garden program. We will be tending our school gardens, uh, next week. It sounds like the weather will cooperate, uh, because the school years keep getting shorter. The Manhattan Catholics, one of the schools we're at, they have forty seven days as. Where they're out with the summer, so. Uh, our onions will be small, but, uh. We'll have something, or so, yeah. We're at nine rules, twenty classrooms and four hundred and six students this year, so it's. Pretty normal, but, uh, having a good time with the kids. So those are kind of some of the highlights that are going on. Answer any questions you might have about particularly master gardener, so that's what I'm already, but. Thank you so much.
Gentlemen.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Small, small guys. Of course, maybe, maybe you'd refill the cups.
Usually this is all.
I had you here Pizza Hut.
Gonna be have another one of those drive in trash rooms?
Yeah, and you're putting a coffee place in on the same property, gonna have like twenty coffee places.
How do they make that?
That's a coffee places with business model is to go up next to another coffee shop.
That's, oh yeah, a lot of them, yeah. Say restaurants, this place is.
Yeah.
So once full, people go to the other place.
Coffee doesn't seem to fill that whole pizza.
And I guess if you could eat pizza for breakfast, then maybe that coincides, but.
I'm not an open.
But it's cold, yeah.
Yeah, I know. Well, you can drink coffee cold too, so.
It's nasty.
In the morning, I really don't need.
Sir. Uh, everyone, Brian Peet, the Riley County Police Department, uh, just wanted to start off with some good news for a change to let you know that. I saved a lot of money by switching mic and never mind. Terrible jokes, uh, so I I just wanted to go. I I'm not gonna spend too much time talking about the statistics. Uh, did wanna talk about fake Patty's Day, uh, road restriction issues. Uh, and then spend a lot more time on, uh, what the department's gonna be doing for this upcoming budget season. So for our part one crimes, we were, um, forty four percent below the five year average. Uh, this was a, uh, compared to February, but this was about a forty percent decrease. One of the things I wanna point out is from December was a hundred and thirty six incidences to. To now to January, which is seventy five, and now February is fifty seven. Uh, one of, yeah, as moving from over to, uh, part one violent crimes, we were fifty percent below the five year average. There were five aggravated assaults, batteries, two rapes, uh, zero robberies or homicide. Uh, for robberies, there were no robbery, but robberies reported in February, which is a hundred percent below the five years stand, uh, the five year average. For aggravated assaults and batteries, there were two aggravated batteries, three aggravated assaults. During February, this was about fifty two percent below the five year average. Um, two of those incidences were domestic related, so, um, those are one of those things that we necessarily can't predict. But as far as our data led policing, the other parts and putting the officers in the right place at the right time. Um, we're pretty sure, question. So in February, part one property crime was forty three percent below the five year average. Uh, for February, it included four burglaries, three larcenies from motor vehicles, one auto theft, two arson incidences. The rest were larcenies of forty incidences. I wanna point out, um, again, talking about, uh, analytics and data led policing. In December, we hit a hundred and twenty one, uh, part one property crimes. Uh, and then in February, we had fifty. We have two individuals in custody, once those individuals were in custody. So that to kind of give you an idea of how one or two people can skew. The statistics and again, that I think that's kudos to our intelligence unit, uh, to the officers who have been out there. Uh, making sure, looking through repeat offender programs, everything else to that effect. Um, structural burglaries, we were seventy two percent below the five year average. One was non-residential, three were residential, two occurred in Manhattan, unfortunately, two occurred in the. Um, uh, we'll also gonna say that when these types of things happen, we normally do have. Solid leads and we're, and we would be soon to make. Vehicle burglaries, we were eighty five percent below the five year average, no signs of forced entry in and in the burglary reports. So we would again ask folks, lock your cars, um, don't, don't, uh, a lot of these times, it's, it's, it's a crime of opportunity. Motor vehicle thefts, we were seventy seven percent below the five year average. One vehicle has, uh, I'm sorry, that vehicle that was stolen in February was recovered on March twelfth. For DUIs, we were twenty four percent below the five year average. Preventable traffic accidents, we were five percent below the five year average, the number of traffic accidents. And, uh, February was about seven percent below the five year average. So, uh, again, this is, uh. I think again, it's, it's just a very good, uh, reflection of, of the effort that we put into, into our analytics. And, and a lot of this can be, uh, traced back to the technology investments that the law board has allowed us to do. Um, and that we've gotten in support through the city and especially through the county commission. Uh, for fake Patty's Day. It was, you know, knock on the wood, I'm gonna, it was last year was better, my, my first fake Patty's Day is kind of like, okay, this is, alright, you see this? Uh, the next year, we implemented a, a plan in place and we had significantly less incidences. And I would venture to say this year, we even had half of those incidences. So we're working to making sure that this is, you know, there's a lot of people in the community don't, don't appreciate it. Um, I've even gone on record in the past and I'd like to stump it out, I got in trouble for that. Uh, but, uh, I I will say, um, it's, uh, I, I think it's not necessarily the event for me, it's the behavior that comes as a result of it. And, uh, so we did see, uh, I'll venture to say that a lot of in my interactions. Were individuals who have come from outside the community. Uh, in believing that they can, again, do whatever they want to and, and not be held accountable to those. Uh, those specific incidences that they, that they do, uh, the young kids. Were having their own individual house parties, uh, had even signs put up there saying, we don't want people here. And, uh, so they were doing their thing and, and then there were several of them, unfortunately, where people just kind of just came into their backyards, came in their homes, came into their front yards. And they asked us, can you guys please get them out? And we, we obliged, so I, I think they'd be, you know, to, to keep. The thing about policing is. You don't, if you don't wanna be police, you're not gonna be police, so it's a reflection on the title of community that we live in. So I can threaten people all day with arrest or anything else like that, but if people don't voluntarily comply. And show that sense of deep decency within themselves, no matter what we do is ineffective. So I think this is more of a credit, not necessarily to the department, we, we, we've done a lot of enforcement. But I think that's a testament to the type of caliber of individuals that we have within our community, so I'm very, very grateful for that. Um, outside of fake Patty's Day, uh, just giving the, uh, the commission just a quick heads up. We, we were our in constant, uh, communications with, uh, the Aggieville Business Association. We're trying to hone down road restrictions in around Aggieville. We're also reaching out to the city to try to find out, this morning, we had a very good presentation from the city manager as well as the mayor. And they were talking about the five plan or, or an extended strategic plan on what Aggieville may look like. So one of the things that we're trying to figure out is it gonna be a walkable one, that the moral's gonna be gone. So we're, we, we wanna be part of those conversations, but at the same time, we wanna try to nail down what is that we can do to strike a good balance with the ABA. Uh, in their business, but also with safety. For the, uh, uh, one quick thing is just to, to let you know that, uh, uh, sir, we had talked about, we, we're pulling a lot of data. Uh, Commissioner McKinnon, we are pulling a lot of data regarding the jails, I say that for people out there listening. Um, uh, on, you had asked a very, very good question about the, uh, the crime rate. And, and the jails and how many folks are in the jails for how long, which types of crimes, how can we expedite it if there's a possibility? Internal or external factors to speed this up. I'm not sure if the public is aware, and I'll touch on this as we talk about the budget or as I move to talking about the budget. But the county i- i- is, is pays a significant portion. Often it's misunderstood, people say, well, the, the, the RCP's budget, eighty percent city, twenty percent county. Well, twenty percent county, but the county covers all, uh, CIP projects, all building maintenance facilities. But they also deal with the treatment and the healthcare of the inmates. And when you're dealing with folks who may not, vast majority of those people who do not have healthcare. That is a significant amount of cost that the, that the county is paying. So I, I, I wanna make sure people on the outside know, the city does pay eighty percent, but that twenty percent is misleading. If that's the only thing that folks are thinking about, so, so one of those questions was, you know, what are we doing to expedite? A- as well as, you know, how are we being good fiscal stewards? So we're in the, in the midst of pulling that data and we should have that for you, hopefully within the next, uh, two or three weeks. We'll definitely have it for you at the next law.
I'd like to have that information too, if not possible.
Of, of course, we will send it out to the entire county commission.
Now, Director Pete, do you, and I'm, I'm can't remember all the forms, uh, do you get Medicaid for those, um, inmates that don't have health insurance?
It depends entirely, uh, if, if, I, I don't wanna misspeak on that one, but I would like to, I would probably say no, because once they. Actually, no, the answer is no, because once they come in, uh, where we're at for an extended amount of time. Uh, I can't remember what that window is, it might be like twenty nine days or something like that, but then Medicaid ends. And then the county is on the hook for everything afterwards. And, and recently, we've had several individuals who have actually had surgeries, um, because they've come into our custody, um, ill. And, and that has cost the county a significant amount of money, e- even to include the, the recent influx of incarceration, incarceration. So we, we're able to house realistically a hundred and forty three people, but if we talk about classifications and not wanting to put. Uh, a younger person with a less violent crime, uh, in the same area as somebody who has a more violent crime for safety issue. They may have to ask, or, or if we have a, we've had several crimes or several shootings where there were multiple individuals involved. So we don't want those people together, um, you know, to fight their cases. So then we may have to send someone out to Geary County or Potawatomi County or in, in some places in between, uh. And those costs are absorbed by the county, uh, and, and so we wanna make sure that people in the public know. The county's feeling the pain too, just like everyone else.
And Director Pete, just for my, just for my clarification, although this is a question that I know the answer to. Um, that you talk about the twenty percent, right? All of those costs are on top of, in addition to the twenty percent.
Yes, yes, yes.
That's where the disconnect frequently comes from.
Yes.
People think we're only paying twenty percent.
Oh, no, there, it's twenty percent of operational costs on top of other responsibilities. And then the other part of it is, is, you know, we, we, we don't wanna create that barrier, but as the budgets. Come up and you all have been doing this longer than I have, those communications and those us versus them conversations and some people in the public who. Who are, are, you know, antagonistic or a little bit more distrusting of how the government is operating and how we're spending tax dollars, um. You know, it comes back, well, Manhattan's not doing this, well, the county's not doing that, the back and forth. I just want people to know that everyone is spending significant amount of money, but not beyond the money. The, the, the priority of safety and humanization of the individuals that we come into contact with in department has been a huge priority for both commissions. Um, so as we, uh, look at talking about budget seasons, we, we would like to. Uh, one of the efforts that I want to do is to put out quick hit videos to the public. To letting people know and not just saying, well, here's the budget, you can see it online and decipher it for yourself. But I wanna give quick hit, uh, video saying, okay, this is the budget season and this is what we're looking at doing. And this is what we've cut and this is what we've done to reallocate funds. And so I wanted, I wanna have those, uh, out there to the public so that they're aware. And that's part of one of the reasons that I want to, uh, we're gonna reach out to Brittany, uh, with the county and ask. If we can, you know, all those other costs, again, the, on top of costs, when we talk about healthcare and those different things. How can we say this is the true dollar figure or the estimated dollar figure of what the county is budgeting for, what the county's paying? So we can make sure people are aware, um, of, of, of the burden they're wearing, shouldering to keep the community safe. Um, we're also looking at, uh, at a, at, at kind of a, in, in a. In not an app, but just like a little place on the, on the website that folks can go to, that if you enter in your. Home and you know how much you're paying and things like that, that it would pop out a dollar figure of like, so for every dollar or for every tax dollar you're paying. This is how much of it's going to RCPD. So in that discussion, we wanna again make sure that we connect with the city as well as with the county. So that the formula that we have, that is something that we can all agree on, because the last thing we wanna do is put out something in the county. That's not right, or the city's like, uh, that's not necessarily right. So we wanna just have people have a very good idea of what the true problem are for, for law enforcement and for police. Uh, outside of that, I have, uh, no other question or no other information to present. Is there anything that I can answer for the county commission? So. Thank you all.
Good morning, Commission. John Ellerman, Public Works. And I have two positions that I need to ask to be filled. Um, I'm gonna start with a utility tech position. This would be the second in. Our staffing, I guess, um, we, we, we. You allowed me to convert it up, a position a while back, a few years ago, to create the first one we had. Um, that person is still here, we, when I add a position to that. Um, department division. Um, with the retirement of HPS, and they are the, um. People we've been contracting to operate. The University Park Water and Sewer District as well as, um, Terre Heide Sewer District. Um, they have decided to retire and get out of the business of being operators and doing that kind of work. So it leaves us with multiple choices. One would be either go back out to bid or look for another operator. Which in the past has been. Pretty slim pickings, um, to say the least. I think with having this utility division within the department gives us a little bit more flexibility, a little more. Better response time to many complaints and problems we have had within the districts. Maybe not necessarily a little bit cheaper for each of them, but it, it definitely gives us, I think, a better service to those customers. This position. Is a. Right now, it's a budgeted public works operator two position that, um, the person holding that position recently retired. And so I'd like to convert that into this utility tech, which, uh. It's a little lower paid scale, um, and definitely the pay's gonna be a lot less. Than the, the person that retired with. The, this position is responsible for water sampling, um. On a daily basis and on a monthly basis of the water districts, they will be, um. Doing, yeah, meter readings once a month in all of our water districts. We will have. Checks on lagoons and the lift stations in Terre Heides, which are individual home lift stations, the grinder pumps that we talked about. Maybe doing a Keats that. Each home out there has one and we're responsible for their maintenance and upkeep. And Terre Heide switch. Different story altogether, but I don't know how that happened, but we are. So between the two positions. We not quite, maybe full-time, but as we bring on the lagoon for University Park and the lagoon for Keats. Here in the next year, I'm hoping, then this is definitely the time to have. We will need two full-time positions at that spot. Um, the, this position is required to get certified. Water and sewer operations, so there's two certifications through KDHE that. Um, the position will need to have. And we will be good to, for, to cover all our responsibilities. With KDHE on operating the district marts or districts with. So I leave that. About that.
So are you gonna class, you think you could hire someone with those certifications, or do you have to?
Um, I'm not sure I'd be able to hire with the certifications, but we read. And here, um, at least one or two years to get. A year to get each certification, so.
Um. See, Ryan, we have to do that too, hire someone and. Train them, get them through the classes.
And I think it's, it's something that you wanna go out and just get a certification and look for the job for. If you get the job and then they teach, they get you certified to take, be responsible for that position, so. We do have certified operator or certifications in each water and sewer now that we can use to maybe cover this, but. The existing. The existing physician, he'll test next week at KRWA for his sewer. Um, certification, and then he'll start working on the water after that, and this one. Depending on where we feel the most need is where we'll start about water on the sewer side.
If, for. That maintenance of all the guns of water, can we build the benefit districts?
Yes, the benefit districts, hey, we'll build them back salary, our, our portion of that salary for. The work they put into each district, yeah. It's a kind of a, a mess because we have nine different districts that get built.
Yeah.
Depends on how much time they spend in each one.
Yeah.
And we're doing these separately too. Okay, uh, I would make a, a motion, um. That we fill the public works utility tech position as presented.
Second. And move it second to approve selling public works utility technician position, all in favor.
The next one is the purchasing agent. As you recall in my monthly updates for the last year or more, I've had that position open. So we've had it open, the position had been filled with. A different employee that, the same employee that we just changed the job description for, or the job duties from operator to, to the. Utility tech. I've been saving this for the time for. For this time, so, um, the purchasing agent, they, they buy the parts. Uh, look up parts and help buy the parts for the, any equipment that we're working on. Um, they're responsible, keep in the parts room and, uh, supply stock to net. As well as ordering equipment and materials for the other fleets as they, um. And the inventories of stockpile of pipe and other materials we have stockpiled out there. Crack filler, metal pipe. Sign equipment, posts, barricades, all those things that this person is that purchasing agent for all those. Um, they'll help. Do research on specifications for. Truck. Motor grader, the trailer specifications. They help them do all of those type of things. Basically, it's our parts room, parts. Person in, in our, with our stuff.
And also inventory, I think a key point is the pickup and deliver, because it does have to have a class.
Yes.
ACL, so.
So, yeah, we, we require this position to have a class ACL if we need to drop off. A, a piece of equipment or even a truck to vendor to fix for repairs, or. We're buying new, we need to go pick it up, that person is able to do that, or take a load. Um, a cover out to the bridge crew or another crew out on the job that they didn't take with them. Bring up later, so that has that type of thing. There, one is kind of in charge of the. Surplus. Items that, which is in itself could be a kind of a. Full-time job at certain times of the year, um. Yeah, so they'll organize picking up the surplus from other departments and hauling it out to our shop for storage until the end of.
Make a motion to approve the filling of the purchasing agent position in Public Works Department.
You second that?
It moved second to approve filling purchasing agent position. Maywork.
So for me, thank you very much.
Wishing then to adjourn the, uh, March twentieth meeting on the Riley County Commission.
I was saying that.
Move it second to adjourn the March twentieth meeting.
Is that a B D, uh, IT guy?